Please come to order. Carla, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Salzman.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Hales. Colleagues, I understand that our mayor is in Washington DC pursuing council business. So, under our rules, I have the honor as the council president of being the presiding officer. Carla, how was your weekend?
Pretty good, thank you.
And Rachel gave me a little memo. Rachel, thank you for walking me through this. And Rachel has a little red flag. If I air somehow, she'll throw it out. We'll huddle. I have a brief script I need to read at the beginning of the council meeting. And it's now familiar to all of you who are regular attendees. Purpose of council meetings is the orderly consideration of the public's business. Preservation of order and decorum is necessary for due consideration of matters before council. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend council meetings. During the meetings, there will be time-limited opportunities for public comment on various agenda items. And I will just note in passing that I intend to strictly enforce the rules following in the great tradition of Commissioner Amanda Fritz, who I am prepared to vote as the single best convener of meetings on this council that I've served with. Although citizens can sign up for communications, public testimony on a council item must address the matter being considered. And if you stray off the matter being considered, I regret that I will have to declare you out of order and ask you to only address the matter that's on the agenda. When you come before council, we're not like the state legislature, so you don't have to give us your name and address, and you don't have to keep addressing the presiding officer. All we ask is that you put your name in for the record, and you may address the council informally. If you are a lobbyist, you are required to disclose that information at the start of your testimony. If you are here representing an organization, I ask that you extend the courtesy of disclosing that information as well. Unless otherwise informed, each community member will have three minutes to speak in front of council. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a beep and a light flash on the box before you. At three minutes, you'll hear four beeps, and the lights will flash. And that will be the time for the next person to speak.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I've actually learned that it is possible to arrange for continuous beeping after three minutes.
Carla, you are hereby authorized to maintain continuous beeping.
Thank you.
As long as there are no adverse health impacts on anyone in this body. We ask that you respect the time limit so that there's time to hear from each person who has signed up to speak. And I just want to comment on that. When we allow people to go over, and go over by a lot, what we have the effect of doing is silencing other people who waited in line to speak. And the consequence of that is we sometimes have public hearings where as many as half the people who've signed up can't be heard because other people have taken more than their fair share. So, we will strictly limit people to the amount of time that is established. If you have handouts, please give them to Carla, our esteemed council clerk, and she will distribute them to council members. And we ask you not to distribute things directly to council members. Council rules and procedures seek to preserve the public order and to ensure that council deliberations proceed efficiently, that all who want to participate get heard, and to treat everyone in this building with respect. Conduct that disrupts the meeting, for example, like shouting during someone's presentation, or interrupting testimony or council deliberations, will not be allowed. Please show your support or displeasure with your hands, i.e. waving, thumbs up, thumbs down. We urge you not to applause. And this is a warning specifically to anyone who is contemplating disrupting this proceeding. If you do, you will be escorted from council chambers and excluded from the meeting. Lastly, if needed, council will be taking a half-hour break at 12:00 or 12:30 today, depending on council's schedule. I'll do my best to bring all the work home before then. And I will announce when the meeting will reconvene before we take the break. With that, Carla, we have one communication item. Would you please call the item?
Item 53, request of Charles Johnson to address council regarding civil rights case and settlements.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Fish. Don't get attached to that phrase. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Tricky Dick Nixon, and you would all be a perfect fit for my cabinet. That's based on your vote last week to go against the legal opinion of the public prosecutor. Some of you might infer that I'm not the biggest fan of DA Underhill, who allows killer cops to go unchecked. However, the issue right now is that, just like Dick Nixon's cabinet and legal team, you prefer CYA over the USA, and you prefer them over my fellow citizens. It will be a sad day for all of us Portlanders if we vote to return any of you to office when your primary concern is covering up 25-year-old secrets under the silly pretext of "city government deserves eternal lawyer-client privilege." Malarkey. We have a right to know what we paid the city attorney to do, and the fact that he would hide behind the risk that, oh my gosh, the city's insurers might have to pay out some money if the dirty laundry gets exposed in court. We respect poorly upon your moral character. I do want to note that, not as issue of moral character but of legal practicality, Commissioner Novick did not vote to pursue the Underhill-Bartlett decision. But it's a sad position for us as a city to be in, two days after we've celebrated the birth of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. I was very pleased to hear Amanda Fritz on KBOO Radio as she spoke at Highland Christian Church, joining the community to celebrate the open government and diligent advocacy for human rights and civil rights that Dr. King embodied before he was assassinated. So, I hope that you will reconsider that sacrifice is sometimes necessary. Sometimes you must sacrifice, oh my gosh, the attorney-client privilege of the city council from 25 years ago and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is it the only communication we have today? So, Carla, do you not have notation of any consent items that have been pulled? Have you?
I do not either.
All right, so let's have a vote to adopt the consent.
Fritz?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye. The Senate passed this, colleagues. We're a couple minutes ahead. I was thinking we'd maybe take up item 64, which I think we could do quickly, and then come back to time cert. With that objection, Carla, would you please read item number 64?
64, accept bid of Landis and Landis Construction LLC for the Southeast Powell Reconstruction and Green Streets project for $3,535,959.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christine Modi, Procurement Services. You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Landis and Landis Construction. The engineer's estimate on this project was $3,730,000. On December 1st, 2015, six bids were received, and Landis and Landis is the low bidder at $3,535,958,050, which is 10.57% under the engineer's estimate. The Bureau of Environmental Services has reviewed the bid items and accepts the proposed pricing as good. Working with Procurement Services, BES identified the Southeast Powell Reconstruction and Green Streets project as a pilot to the new subcontractor equity program. This program establishes an aspirational goal of 20% of the hard construction costs for disadvantaged minority, women, and emerging small businesses. DMW ESB subcontracting participation on this project is at 20%, with 17% of that going to disadvantaged minority and women contractors. I will turn this back over to council if you have any questions about the bidding process.
Council questions or comments? Thank you very much. Anyone sign up to testify?
I do not have a sign-up sheet.
Seeing none, can I have a motion, please, to adopt the report?
I'll move.
Second.
Carla, would you please call the roll?
Fritz?
Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fish?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm delighted that we not only came in below the original estimate, that we also hit our target on equity and opportunity. Thanks for a nice report. Colleagues, let's take a three-minute break, and while we're on break, we'll ask the 9:45 time-certain to come forward and get set, and then we'll pick it up in three minutes. Council is... Council is on recess. Would you please read the 9:45 time-certain, item number 54?
Accept the annual report of the Public Safety General Obligation Bond Program Independent Citizens Committee.
Well, this is a very important task every year where we review the good work of the Citizen Oversight Panel, and today I'm pleased to welcome a distinguished panel. And we'll begin by asking the chair if she would make some introductory remarks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. We're so happy to be here on such a lovely day. The Citizens Committee is made up of four citizens, Kirk Hall, Mr. Mick Seidel, and Kobe Jackson, and myself, Nicolette Johnston. We have been working on the project going into our fifth year, and two of the projects are completed. The Fire Station 21 and the Emergency Coordination Center are done, so you will not hear much of a report on those two. The ones remaining are the radio project and the fire apparatus, and of course, the most important part is the financial reports, which will be given to you in just a minute. I would like to give you a statement from the Independent Citizens Committee, as quite short. As previously noted, the Independent Citizens Committee held quarterly public meetings with city staff responsible for each project funded by the Public Safety Geo-Bond to review the progress of each project. In addition, each project received guidance and input from project oversight committees. The members of the ICC found the information provided by city staff to be comprehensive, timely, and informative. Staff members have been responsive to ICC questions and have supplemented their regular presentations with additional information upon request. ICC members have provided city staff with the various ideas and suggestions concerning the projects, to which city staff were very responsive. The relationship between the ICC and city staff has been collaborative and productive. The ICC does not provide either a financial performance auditing function and can only proceed with the information presented at its quarterly meetings. With this observation, ICC members believe they have been kept fully informed by city staff and are satisfied with the quality and presentation of information presented regarding the projects. Based on the information presented to the ICC, it appears that the projects funded by the Public Safety Geo-Bond are consistent with the voter-approved purposes of the Geo-Bond, and that expenditures to date have also been appropriate. It also appears that execution of the projects to date have been professional and appropriate, and were designed to meet the purposes of the Geo-Bond in an economical fashion. It seems to the ICC that the projects are generally on track to meet the projected budgets and timelines. Overall, the ICC members are impressed with the focus and professionalism of the city staff responsible for executing these projects, and appreciate the courtesy and responsiveness the ICC has received to date. Mr. Mick Seidel, excuse me, I mispronounce it every time, has a few words to say. He's on the committee.
And before he does, Ms. Nicholson, would you put your name in the record formally?
Yes. My name is Nicolette Johnston.
Johnson, thank you. Mr. Seidel?
Yes, just as one member of this committee, I just wanted to share very quickly, and really to reiterate our general statement, that I think the council should feel very comfortable that the oversight function that was required by the measure originally has been fulfilled. And what I'd like to echo is just the professionalism and the cooperation that we've received from staff in our function again this last year has really been outstanding. And this has been an interesting exercise for me and I think the other members, and it's really been a pleasure as a citizen to see the degree of professionalism and attention to detail and to the original scope of the bond measure that we've received from the staff that we worked with. As far as I'm concerned, it's been a very good process and one that you should feel very comfortable with.
Mr. Green, are you here to add anything to this discussion? I think, is this actually your first official appearance before council?
This is Mr. Beck. I'm not sure who's...
Excuse me, Mr. Beck. I apologize.
It's okay.
No, I've testified before council before. So, my name is Aaron Beck, and I am with OMF Business Operations, and I work with the project team and the Oversight Committee on the finances for the program. And this morning, I'm going to discuss the overall finances for the Geo-Bond program that was approved by the council and the voters back in 2010. If you'll turn to the spreadsheet right after page three in your report, I'll walk you through that. That is a comparison of budgeted revenues and expenses with actual expenses and revenues so far through last fiscal year. The report shows that the program had four main projects. The construction of Station 21 on the Willamette River that was completed in November of 2015, the construction of the Emergency Coordination Center that was completed in January 2015, and the replacement of the city's public safety radio system, which is in progress, and the replacement of fire apparatus, which is in progress. The original budget for the program was just over $1,001,000,000 when factoring in all the cost and resources for the radio system replacement project and the Emergency Coordination Center projects. For example, the Public Safety Geo-Bond program only provided $4 million of the cost for the Emergency Coordination Center, which had a total budget of about $19.8 million. This report in the original budget column and the current budget column shows the $72.4 million that the voters approved for Geo-Bonds, and that was a primary resource for the program. The current budget is now $106 million, and the increase there was primarily due to some grants that we received in conjunction with the Station 21 project and the apparatus projects, and additional resources that we identified for the Station 21 project. That was primarily some leftover money from a previous Geo-Bond measure that was approved by the voters back in 1998 and that we had not spent completely. So, as you can see, a total of $82.7 million was spent through the end of last fiscal year. And one of the requirements of the council had for the program when it was originally approved back in 2010 was that prior to the final debt sale, an in-depth analysis would be done of costs to complete the program and to determine if any savings could be returned back to the taxpayers. So, last spring, prior to the third and final debt sale, we completed an in-depth analysis of all of the costs of the remaining projects, and we identified savings in the Station 21 project and in the radio system project. We also factored in interest earnings that we had been earning on the debt sale proceeds while we had them and had not spent them yet. As a result, we determined that we could complete planned projects and would not need to sell $1.87 million of bonds that the voters had authorized. So, in our third and final debt sale in June, then we sold only $70.5 million...well, I shouldn't say. The amount that we sold made the total for all the Geo-Bonds $70.5 billion, and out of the authorized amount of $72.4 million. So, that resulted in savings then to the taxpayers.
Can I ask you a question off of that?
Sure.
One of the things that went our way, and this happened primarily, I think, under Dan's leadership and some predecessors, when we did the Big Pipe project, is we were able to borrow money at very favorable interest rates to do that huge capital project. What has been the interest rate environment during the life of the Geo-Bond?
I don't know the specific percentages, but I know that we, overall, we sold bonds that were less than what was in the official documents that the voters approved. So, like, the voters approved...because in the thing that went to the voters, it actually estimates what the cost would be for, like, per hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know the exact percentages, but the assumptions that we made, the interest rates that we sold the debt at were less than those assumptions. So, the taxpayers saw savings in two areas. They saw it from us selling less of the bonds authorized and the lower interest rates.
That's good news, to offset the low interest they're getting on their deposit account. So, thank you.
So, just in closing, now we're updating our projections here for our requested budget and capital improvement plan that we'll be submitting on February 1. And right now, they're showing that the projects are on budget, and it looks like we'll be finished with them in either late fiscal year '16, '17, or early part of '17, '18, and then we would close out the fund that the city set up for this program. Any other questions?
Very good. Let's move to council comments and questions.
We do have two other presenters, too.
Oh, okay.
From the two projects that are remaining.
All right, let's get everything on the table, then we'll have everyone come back for questions. Thank you very much. Who are we calling up?
Marco Benetti.
Good.
Fire apparatus.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning, council. My name's Marco Benetti. I'm deputy chief of logistics, Portland Fire and Rescue, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to give you a quick synopsis of where we are to date and where we're headed. As was stated, Fire Station 21 has been in operation since November 2014. It's a lead gold building, and it's a structure that is beautiful and very functional. Firefighters have been operating out of that since November of '14, and they love it. It's a great building. To date, we've purchased and received four RRVs, Rapid Response Vehicles, one heavy squad unit, two Quints, four ladder trucks, and two fireboats. We've ordered two airlight rehab units and nine fire pumpers, and those should be delivered sometime this year. The rehab unit should be here hopefully late spring, and the pumper should start arriving in October is the current projection. And the final apparatus that we will be ordering on this bond are two brush units, one foam unit, one water tender, which is a big tank of water you can deliver to any incident, and one dive team support apparatus. We're currently under budget and on schedule to complete apparatus acquisitions by the end of 2016, but we're working diligently to try and complete that sooner. So, it's market conditions in the process, sometimes delays things. And I'd just like to say it's been and continues to be a pleasure working with the members of the Independent Citizens Committee, and I want to thank them for their insight, their oversight, and their stewardship of this important project. Thank you very much.
Carl Larson will talk about the radio replacement project.
Welcome, Mr. Larson.
Good morning, council. Carl Larson, Public Safety Systems Revitalization Program, commonly known as PSSRP. I'm a co-project manager for the radio project. Myself and Mark Tanner have the privilege of shepherding that project. The last year was an eventful year for us. All of the radio sites except for two are completed. Those two are Walters Hill that you're familiar with, and Mount Scott, which we're repairing and strengthening the tower there. Once that's completed, we'll be updating the microwave systems for the entire system. And the very long part of the project for the last year was really distributing the wibbles and portables for the public safety systems here in the city of Portland. All of those radios have been programmed and are out in the field now for public safety. We're in the process of doing that for the other bureaus as well, and will be completed with those probably around March. Project is under budget, and it's on schedule except for the build at Walters Hill. The Walters Hill build and the Mount Scott tower strengthening has lengthened that project just a short time, but we believe it will be on schedule to have that project actually go live in October. We'll be cutting the project over in phases since we're building two cells, if you will, an east cell and a west cell. The east cell will be cut over first sometime in June. We'll be doing our coverage studies at about that same time as well to make sure the system is performing as we had hoped. The other thing I'd like to tell you is not only did we have... The other thing that I'd like to tell you is, not only did we have a pleasurable time with the ICC, and it's unfortunate that the chair, Mr. Hall, couldn't be here. He has been instrumental in making sure that he asks good questions, and the ICC itself asks good questions and has good comments for us, and so I echo what the Fire Bureau said as well. We've had a good run with them, and we look forward to working with them to the end of the project. The other thing that I'd be remiss in not saying is all of the many team players that we have here on the radio project. I have the privilege of being the face of that, but we have so many bureaus involved and so many people that have stepped up to the plate and done quality work for us, not only the vendor, but we have particularly two employees that have been very instrumental in getting things done for public safety. Mark Schmidt for the Fire Bureau and Mike Unsworth for the Police Bureau. So they've both been very, very good champions for us and also good resources for us. We appreciate all of the council's support as well that we've had throughout this long project.
Thank you.
That completes our report.
Well, let's turn it over to council comments and questions. Colleagues?
I had a question on the resource analysis that Mr. Beck walked us through. It shows a balance of about $2.7 million. So are those funds committed to apparatus purchases and other things that Chief Benetti just outlined?
On that, or the balance column there represents basically where we are, we came in under the budget. So, and the largest part of that, it represents the bond proceeds. So the budget said that we were going to sell $72.4 million worth of bonds. We really only sold $70.5. So we're going to basically not receive that $1.8 million. We're not going to receive that from the bond sales. So that just represents coming in less than the budgeted amount for revenues. So it doesn't represent cash that's available.
So it's not a balance that's in our hands?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I have a question, either to Mick or Nicolet. Are you getting the staff support you need to do the job that we've asked you to do?
We surely have, because I've asked a couple of questions that I felt didn't seem quite right on the surface. And in this case, I spoke with two of the fire personnel, and I got the information back immediately and involved the Park Bureau in an exchange of misinformation, it turned out. So we, I was very surprised when you start digging how quickly somebody responds, like two days.
That's great. And can I make a suggestion to our volunteer committee? We have two other committees, two other processes that are similar to this. One is a Technology Oversight Committee that reviews ongoing big technology projects. And the other is, we're moving to a more regular overview of major capital construction projects. In each case, the city is moving to a chart that uses red, green, and yellow icons to sort of identify problem areas. Your report is very thoughtful and contains a lot of information. I would urge you to work with staff to come up with a, an additional component, which is a way of color coding your annual report, so that, let's say there's an area where you think we're falling short, or you think there's some warning signs. The color coding alerts the public and us to that problem, and then we can, we can focus in on that. I think the goal of the city is to have a uniform system of reporting, and frankly, I think it's easier sometimes for people to follow a color-coded system than just read a report. So food for thought, and I hope you consider at least asking to see the reports of those other two bodies and see if there's something in there that you may want to adopt.
Thank you.
If I might just make a comment about that. In our actual individual meetings, when we get the reports before we meet, unlike this annual meeting, there are certain issues called out, and we've continued to ask for that, and we've gotten those issues, you know, highlighted for the committee. But I understand it would be helpful in an annual meeting. I just want you to know that we get, I think, sort of that concept in our, in our work information that we receive for each of the meetings.
Good.
Where issues are called out.
And I just want to make sure that in our annual meetings, to the extent you think there's something we could do differently, or the extent that there's a caution flag you want us to be aware of, that, that we make it as easy as possible for you to convey that information to the council.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Carla, did anyone sign up to testify?
Yes, we have one person, Charles Johnson.
You'll take a seat, and then we'll, thank you very much for your presentation.
My name, for the record, is Charles Johnson, and I do think that our fellow citizens would benefit if you could direct some questions to the full scope of just this general bond in that, in past times that I've been in these chambers, particularly Novick, but all of you have expressed concern for a West Side Emergency Operations Center. And while we want to congratulate ourselves on the good performance we've had with regard to items on this bond, I think that it's an appropriate context for us to talk about general, overall emergency preparedness and a West Side Emergency Operations Center. Thank you.
Does anyone else here want a chance to testify? If not, this is a report. Carla, would you please call the roll?
Motion to accept.
Move to accept the report.
Please.
Thank you very much to the committee. There's several reasons that we have citizen oversight committees for things like this, and one is, as was reflected, that you get to see the staff are working really diligently. And then you come here and report to your fellow citizens that you have done some independent oversight, and indeed, that you are satisfied that we're doing what we promised to the voters. It's much more believable when it's this outside citizen making that statement rather than myself as a politician. So it's glad to see that confirmed. I want to thank Kobe Jackson. She's my representative on this committee. We have a similar committee oversight for the Parks Bond, which the voters approved in 2014, and I think it's a great model. I appreciate your suggestion, Commissioner Fish, to have the reports color-coded, if that makes sense. It's great to see all of these projects getting done. So thank you to the voters of Portland who were promised specific things with this bond measure and indeed are getting what we paid for. And particularly, thank you to Commissioner Randy Leonard, who led the bond measure campaign, passed it by 6,000 votes out of 100, 208,000 votes in 2010 in the height of the recession. I remember him sitting right next to me the next morning, because when I went, when we had gone to bed the evening before, it looked like it was going to fail. And that wasn't back in the days before smartphones, that's just five years ago, but we didn't have smartphones. So we were getting texts from our staff to tell us, you know, what the latest updates from Long Island County elections were. Sadly, voter under-elections failed by 2,000 votes out of over 200,000. So it wasn't, it was a mixed set of results as far as I was concerned. It really shows that even in the midst of the recession, Portlanders care about general safety, public safety, and the structures of our fire and emergency management system. And so I'm really appreciative that all of these projects got done. Thank you to the committee and the staff for your report. Aye.
Saltsman?
Well, I want to thank Portland Fire and Rescue and the Public Safety Radio Replacement Project team, and I want to really thank the Independent Citizens Committee for their, for all your diligent work to make sure that this, these funds that voters approved were spent on what we told voters they were going to be spent on. And we even didn't need, didn't need to spend the full amount, too. So we saved taxpayer money as well. I also want to, you know, acknowledge Commissioner Randy Leonard's leadership in the bringing this bond measure forward and working hard to get it passed by voters. And it's really, it's some outstanding additions to our, making our city safer for our residents. Thank you. Aye.
Novick?
I, too. Salute Commissioner Leonard, and since I sit in the same chair he used to sit in, I hope that the winning, winning elections, you know, winning measures that go to the voters to raise money for public services is something that goes along with this chair. And thank you so much to the committee. I mean, we have so many people who volunteer for so many citizen committees in this city, and continually amazed at how many people are willing to give up lots of time for no money whatsoever to serve in these functions, particularly when, I mean, some of them are glamorous than others. And some of them, you get your name in the paper all the time, you're part of, like, dramatic debates over major issues. This is not one of those committees. So I know you're not, I know you're not in it for the money, you're not even in it for the fame, you're just in it for, to do a good job for your fellow citizens. So thank you so much. Aye.
Well, my colleagues have really said it all. I just want to add my thanks to Mick Seidel, my designee. When Mick isn't fighting the good fight on behalf of employees through his law practice, he's working in the public interest on this and many other committees. Thank you, Mick, and all of our citizen volunteers. Commissioner Fritz reminded me, I remember as if it was yesterday, Randy sitting there rather haggard, because he'd been up all night, and it seemed like he did win that by a handful of votes, and he, that day, earned the moniker from his colleagues of Landslide Leonard. And Steve, we wish you the same success, perhaps without as much drama. There's one other person, in addition to our public safety bureaus and the professionals and everyone working to make this sing and the voters for their support. Just two other comments. One is, we often have spirited debates about what should be the core priorities of the city and what's a basic service. When the voters adopted that GeoBond, I think they spoke loud and clear that public safety goes to the top, and they prioritize spending in public safety. And that was very encouraging, and I hope that our, at budget time, we continue to reflect that core priority of keeping the people safe. And the second thing is, the only person who really hasn't gotten much acknowledgement in these closing remarks is Commissioner Dan Saltsman. And he has, in fact, been the fire commissioner, as we have delivered on some of the promises of the GeoBond, and he did cut the ribbon on Fire Station 21 and has been bringing his own oversight to those projects. Dan, thank you for being an additional watchdog, and I walk by Station 21 all the time, and it's a stunning addition to our inventory of public buildings, and you ought to be congratulated for bringing that home. For all those reasons, I'm pleased to vote aye, and the matter passes. Thank you. We're about 15 minutes ahead of time, reflecting the new regime here. And so without objection, we'll take up council item number 65. Carla, would you please read the item?
Authorize amendments to the Voluntary Retirement Incentive Program Health Reimbursement Account Plan Document and Summary Plan Description administered by the Bureau of Human Resources Health and Financial Benefits Office through June 30, 2021.
Anna, we'll kick it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Anna Kenwit, Director of the Bureau of Human Resources. I'm here with Kathy Bless, who is our Benefits and Financial Wellness Manager. We are asking you to authorize amendments to the city's voluntary retirement incentive program. This program was in effect in 2013 and provides an incentive for employees to retire who may not otherwise be quite ready to do so. We are bringing the program back to you today in light of the 5% budget reduction directions that bureaus have received. Implementation of this program can provide important flexibility to bureaus as they're looking at reducing their budgets, and the goal would be that implementation of the program would help bureaus minimize impacts to employees through either layoffs or bumping. I'm going to turn it over to Kathy, who will explain to you what the program is. And with that, Kathy?
Good morning, commissioners. Again, Kathy Bless, Health and Financial Benefits Manager with the city. So this morning, I'll talk to you a little bit about the Voluntary Retirement Incentive Program. As Anna already talked about, it was an earlier program adopted by the city in 2013. We're asking an amendment to that program now for 2016 to help bureaus build capacity and flexibility for program services and to protect employees who are just starting their careers with the city, protecting against any budget cuts. The, excuse me, the voluntary retirement incentive program is a $15,000 contribution into a health reimbursement account, which is an HRA. It is money that's held at the city for the benefit of the employees, retirees who take advantage of the program. It is an account that allows for the payment of healthcare premiums and other out-of-pocket expenses. It helps really to build the bridge between when someone decides to retire and likely Medicare eligibility. Employees who are interested in the incentive can voluntarily submit an application for consideration, and they would have until March 31, 2016, to consider this offer and submit their request. Bureau directors must approve the applications and will determine whether the approval of the applicant requests fits the bureau's business needs as well as the potential savings involved. Each applicant that is approved will receive the $15,000 contribution, and it will allow payment of those out-of-pocket medical expenses and premiums for a five-year period of time. The benefit office will work with our current vendor to administer the plan and help participants as they get set up. Our office will also work with HR business partners and bureaus to answer any questions that they, that will come up as folks are submitting their applications and going through the approval process. Not everyone that submits an application may be approved. It is purely the discretion of the bureau and how they determine the potential savings that they might gleam from offering the incentive to the participant. So with that, I ask that you approve the amendment of the voluntary retirement program, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Colleagues, questions?
The $15,000 amount is estimated to cover, did you say, five years of healthcare premiums?
No, the program will run for five years. So they have five years to use the $15,000. The $15,000 is really, it's about a year and a half's worth of premium on a two-party premium, and it's about two years of a one-party premium. So at the city's cost right now, so it does help them pay for those costs, and if they're covered under a spouse through an employer plan, they can hold this money for a little while and help pay for any out-of-pocket expenses or deductibles or coinsurance of another plan that they might be a participant of.
Other questions? Carla, do we have anyone signed up to testify?
I did not have a sign-up sheet for this one.
We have a gentleman in the back. Security, would you please escort this person? Oh, go ahead, come forward.
All right. Go ahead.
We have two people who'd like to testify. Come on forward. Just need your name, and you have three minutes.
President, Commissioners, Jason Lehman, Vice President, Portland Firefighters. President wasn't able to make it today. Alan Firstwiler, so I just wanted to speak on this a little bit. Didn't really have a chance to look it over much, but I did notice the FPDNR-covered employees are being treated differently on this, and I didn't get any explanation why, because I haven't had a chance to ask anybody. So I don't know if somebody wants to address it, but I just see that it's gonna, anybody that I assume is going to retire in April will not have this benefit if you're FPDNR, but PERS-covered employees would, so.
I understand it gets to do with the 27 weeks in that pay period for the retirement benefit calculation, so there's already an incentive for people to retire in April under FPDNR?
I kind of assumed that's what it was, but that, there is a litigation going on there right now, but at this point in time, there is no incentive to retire in April.
We can have staff address that. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning. As the Commissioner noted for the record, my name is Johnson, Charles Johnson. I'm very pleased to have firefighters present. I want to particularly graduate, thank the unionized IAFF firefighters. I do want to point out that I didn't take a look at the online sheet that talks about how many work hours have to go into preparing this, but I hope that the city will be more zealous in eliminating this particular waste and pushing for healthcare for all Oregonians. Doesn't matter whether you like Bernie Sanders or not, we need a national health insurance plan. And then, this idiocy of having different classes of people getting different medical care and having to manage it as they go into retirement and benefits and stuff like that would just be some work that you would not have to do. You could focus on other important issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fritz, would you like staff to come back?
Yes, I think we, I'd like them to answer the question more completely than I was able to.
Anna, did you, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. Thank you. So regarding the question from PFFA, well, first, going back to the current litigation on the 27 pay periods, I think is likely to be resolved quite soon, but it is purposefully called out in terms of the eligibility for retirement. But it is purposefully called out in terms of the eligibility for retirement. If some, if a FPDR member retires in April, then this incentive is not offered. As Commissioner Fritz accurately stated with the 27 pay periods, which is April and October, there already is a built-in incentive. Estimates from police and fire are quite high in terms of the number of potential retirees. In addition, there is, currently, we are in the process of negotiating with the Portland Police Association to see if there is a way to bring back retired police officers because of some of the staffing issues they're experiencing. This program, in exchange for the $15,000, actually includes a prohibition upon coming back to the city for two years. That's the consideration offered by the employee, with an exception, council could make an exception if need be. So, the eligibility criteria are quite intentional in looking at some of the issues we have in public safety. And under the program, generally, bureaus do have to show cost savings. So, it is, again, an intentional program to help bureaus address the potential budget reductions. So?
That's helpful. Thank you very much. Further discussion? And Carla, this is an emergency. Would you please call the roll? Fritz?
Well, it's always good to try to figure out how to balance the budget and make economies at the same time, being fair to long-term, longtime public employees. It's also sobering to know that $15,000 is maybe at best two years' worth of health insurance premiums. And indeed, I hope the council will be working towards more comprehensive solutions to build on the Affordable Care Act. Thank you very much for this work. Aye.
Saltzman?
Thank you.
Novick?
I appreciate your commitment to continue to look for innovative ideas to deal with our financial troubles. Aye.
Aye. The matter passes. Thank you. Colleagues, we have about 11 minutes before the next time certain, and I propose that we marshal forward and we do Item Number 66. Carla, would you please read the item?
Amend regulations for marijuana businesses to include laboratories and research certificate holders, and clarify director's authority to determine violations.
Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you, President Fish. This is a change to the code we adopted this past September to do, to include two additional types of marijuana businesses that are going to be licensed by the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. These two types of businesses were not previously on the state list, and so, we are adding marijuana labs and research certificate holders. It's a minor code change that could have been on the consent agenda. I thought that both the council and the community might be interested in where we are with the marijuana licensing program. And so, I put it on the regular agenda so that Teresa Marquetti and Victor Salinas from the Office of Neighborhood Involvement can give us a brief update on both the fairly minor code amendment and also the process so far. So, Teresa Marquetti?
Thank you, Commissioner, City Council. For the record, my name is Teresa Marquetti. I'm the Live Ability Programs Manager for the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and I'm here with our Marijuana Policy Program Coordinator, Victor Salinas, who will give a brief summary of the amendment.
Good morning. Again, for the record, my name is Victor Salinas, Program Coordinator for the Marijuana Policy Program through the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. Thank you for your time in presenting amendments, proposed amendments to the marijuana code. So, the Oregon Liquor Control Commission has requested local government review of two additional business types in their licensing process. So, those licenses are for laboratories and research certificate holders, as Commissioner Fritz mentioned. By adding these two, these two to our code definitions, that would allow us to expand on our ability to be able to evaluate these locations for minimum requirements as passed by council on September 30, 2015. These proposed amendments before you also adds, we propose that we add a regulatory fee or a review fee of $250 to recover the cost of the land use compatibility review required as part of the application process for the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. In addition, we also request that we incorporate a technical fix to the language on 14B.130.100. This simply clarifies the city's ability to address unlicensed, the unlicensed illegal marijuana market within the city of Portland through a code enforcement. Are there any questions about the proposed amendments?
Shall we continue with the rest of our summary, or do you have a question about the amendment?
Yeah, finish the summary.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time. So, the focus of the program continues to be to develop policy with robust public involvement to integrate the emerging marijuana industry into the Portland landscape. As we continue to move into and transition into the implementation of the licensing and regulatory framework, we hosted two workshops in November aimed at helping applicants navigate the city's application process with over 400 attendees. We've been working closely in partnership with agencies, partnering agencies, bureaus, and listening to industry representatives in order to be, to be responsive to applicant concerns while upholding the established city code. As a result, we've modified the application requirements to streamline the application process. Since October of 2015, we've fielded hundreds of calls through the marijuana information and complaint hotline to address concerns and questions regarding the new marijuana laws and providing information on how to navigate the application process. Here's a brief summary, and there's a slide up above, with some information on where we are with the implementation. We've so far gone through 282 intake appointments to date for marijuana regulatory licenses. In those, we began accepting applications for medical dispensaries qualifying under the grandfather clause as of December 1, 2015. We received 78 applications to date that are applying under the grandfather clause. We also established an intake appointment lottery, which was conducted from November 23 to December 11, 2015, to receive applications for medical dispensaries not grant, not applying to the grandfather clause, as well as recreational retailers, producers, processors, and wholesalers. Of those, 166 applicants signed up through the lottery. 32 applicants submitted for applications for producer, processor, and wholesalers to date. 160 applicants signed up for the medical dispensary, recreational marijuana retailer lottery, and those appointments will be assigned starting the first week in February. For those that did not make it through the lottery process, we also provided an opportunity to sign up for an intake appointment that would backtrack in a little bit. That intake appointment simply allows us to do a quick review of the application to make sure the application materials are all in order, in order for the applicant to submit their application. Of those, 32 applicants signed up to submit applications for producer, processor, and wholesaler license, licenses through the 7th of January, and another 18 have signed up that will be assigned appointments over the next two weeks. 45 applicants signed up to submit applications for recreational marijuana retailer licenses, and 16 for medical dispensaries, those that don't qualify under the grandfather clause. To date, we received $92,050 in application fees, and licensing fees will be received upon license issuance.
Can I just ask a general question?
Absolutely.
Are we seeing concentrations of applications in certain parts of the city? Number one. And number two, we had some concerns when we last took this up, primarily last year, from some folks who felt that with our anti-concentration rule and the timing of certain licensing, that they may be put out of business. Can you tell us whether there were any existing businesses that were forced to close their doors because of the concentration rule? And then, generally, where are these businesses choosing to locate?
Commissioner Fish, so, to answer your first question, it's too early to tell at this point whether or not we're seeing any kind of concentration of retail applications. We are still currently processing the existing dispensary licenses and populating those on the map, and we'll have a better idea come mid-February whether or not we're seeing more applications for one part of the city than another. As to your second question, I think that the policies that were implemented as of September 30 have gone a long way in addressing that concern that we heard from industry. As we said, we've, we've received 78 applications under that grandfather clause, so the vast majority of existing businesses are not going to have to close their doors. If there are, if there are conflicts because of the anti-concentration policy, we will also begin to see those more as we get into February.
Just one comment about concentration. I've lived in cities where they changed their zoning code in response to concerns about concentration of adult-use establishments. People didn't want to see combat zones in effect. The thing about adult-use establishments is, once upon a time, they used to have neon signs, garish displays and things, so that you kind of knew if there was an adult-use establishment in your backyard. I find the new marijuana dispensary is much harder to figure out because they often have a sign that has a green component. I'm never sure whether it's an environmental business, or it's a, it's a pro-green something, or whether it's marijuana. So, it's more discreet, in other words. Unless, of course, you live in the area and you're seeing a lot of foot traffic and car traffic, but it's harder to identify the businesses just from the outside.
That's a good observation. There are some, the rules for advertisement are still in development at the state level with both the OHA and the OLCC. I do think that there is, there's been a peer-to-peer movement on the part of industry to, to be responsible in that manner, and we really appreciate that from the city.
Other questions from my colleagues? Carla, has anyone signed up to testify?
Yes, we have one person, Charles Johnson.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank Commissioner Fritz and especially the staff, and also marijuana industry entrepreneurs who have invested a lot of time in helping to move forward on this issue. I do think that it would be better if we could more often talk about, hopefully, positive revenue impacts, not necessarily through our local controls, but hopefully, like Colorado, the Washington State situation is less clear. This will, you know, in reality, we're talking about some sin taxing, which I'm not in favor of, but we have some expenses we need to face. We have, all these marijuana businesses are going to be opening on streets where homeless people sleep. So, since we've chosen to regulate and still stick a little bit with the sin tax model, part of that is not your issue, it's a state issue. I would hope that when we talk about the nitty-gritty of this regulation, we can also talk about how questionable things like sin taxes can be redeemed into ending homelessness, going beyond just the Sears Shelter and the New Peace Shelter, and also using some of this revenue to bring truly affordable subsidized housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carla, would you please call the roll?
Well, thank you, colleagues, for your support of this emergency ordinance. Thanks to Teresa Marquetti and Victor Salinas and the whole team at the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. I find myself somewhat surprised to be relishing the role of marijuana queen in Portland. It's, it's nice to be able to learn from the mistakes that have been made over time with the liquor program, which Teresa, of course, having managed that program for a long, a long time, is very well aware of. It's important to note that the 25% tax, which is currently in effect, is all going to the state for setting up their program. Our application fees and unlicensed fees will be entirely covering the cost of the program within the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. I believe we're not allowed to use it for revenue generation. So, after we get all of the license, the first wave of licensing done, I will be returning to council so that we can have a conversation with the community about whether we want to refer the 3% tax to the voters that were allowed to do by state law, or whether we want to go with our previous 10% tax that we passed before the ballot measure passed, or not do either. So, those are all options that will be on the table. In the meantime, I'm very proud of the staff for the way that this program has been implemented, the careful handling of applications in very fair order. A couple of glitches here and there, but by and large, it's gone really well. And I also appreciate security staff in City Hall and all of the workers who work in City Hall who've been very gracious in accommodating our use of the atrium for the application. So, thank you very much, colleagues. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I, I'm in a little awkward position. I, with all due respect to Teresa Marquetti, Victor Salinas, Commissioner Fritz, I did vote against the city's regulatory program as I feel it's wholly unnecessary, given the substantial regulation already in place by the Oregon Liquor Control Commission and the Oregon Health Authority. So, to be consistent, I should vote against these amendments, but this is an emergency ordinance, and it won't pass unless I vote for it today. So, I just wanted to note, I continue to be against the city regulatory program at all, but I will vote for these amendments today so that the business can get on. Aye.
Thank you. Novick?
I have to say, I'm surprised that hasn't been in Portlandia yet, that when you walk into City Hall, the first thing you see are signs about marijuana. I really appreciate all the work that Teresa and Victor have done. It's, you've done a ton of work in a very short time period, and I'm glad that we and our fellow citizens can always count on you to give us the straight dope in the marijuana program. Aye.
Oh, my God. Commissioner Fritz, thanks for all the work you've done in leading our efforts at the city to regulate this new industry. Teresa and Victor, thank you for your excellent presentations to council. And I think this is the first time in seven years a colleague has extended the courtesy of voting for a matter he or she may have objected to, but stating an objection, but voting for it so as not to defeat the emergency clause. So, we'll forever call this the Saltzman Courtesy Rule, and we will invoke it the next time we need, we need another colleague, Dan, to step up and do the same thing. Thank you. Pleased to vote aye. The matter passes. Carla, it's now past 10:30, so would you please read time certain, 10:30, Item Number 55?
Proclaim January 20, 2016, to be 2015 MLS Champion Portland Timbers Soccer City, USA Day in Portland.
Commissioner Dan Saltzman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call up to the table Portland Timbers owner and CEO Merritt Paulson, Business Operations Manager Mike Gollum, President of Business Operations, come on up, and head coach Caleb Porter, please come to the table. So, in March of 2009, the city entered into a partnership with the Portland Timbers and Major League Soccer. And I'm happy to say here in January of 2016 that that partnership has more than paid off for everyone in Portland. It was not an easy decision for me at the time. I was somewhat skeptical about the proposal as first presented to us, and I was not a soccer fan, I have to admit. But like many other Portlanders and Oregonians, I have been inspired to become one. I even understand what stoppage time means, although I still don't understand offsides. I'm still working on that one.
Nor do the refs.
Yeah. But what put me over the top in 2009 was the amazing amount of passion and compassion I felt from the fans, the best fans in the world, the Timbers Army. The Army not only supports our team with vigor, they bring that same vigor to the support in the community and the good works that they do. And I want to again recognize their commitment, and by saying once again to Timbers fans, thank you very much. And as many know, that vigor and passion is only matched by the owner and partner to the city of Portland, Merritt Paulson. Merritt, your vision for this team and what it could do for this city has come to fruition in just five years with the cup championship you and your organization have brought home to us. We are thankful to you, Mike and Mike, for heading up a world-class organization. Coach Porter here, too. Coach Porter, we're not sure what magic you sprinkled in the second half of the season, but the tactical maneuvers and the way you inspired your players will be debated in pubs across the city, the state, and the country for years and perhaps even generations to come. So, thank you for what you have given Portland. It's more than a cup championship. It showed the world how we stand together in Portland. And with that, I would like to allow our panel to make a few remarks, and then I'll read the actual proclamation.
And then, we'll, we'll take some council comments.
I don't have any long-prepared remarks. I thank you for honoring us here today. There's probably some joke somewhere about following marijuana policy, but I'm not going to touch that. You know, I'd say that sitting here today is a lot different than what it felt like in 2009 on pins and needles, you know, telling the, you all ad nauseam, what this... like in 2009 on pins and needles, you know, telling the, you all ad nauseam, what this Major League Soccer could bring to this city, and what it could bring to our state and the spotlight it could put on us. And really, the Portland Timbers have been a story about having high expectations and exceeding those expectations at every step of the way, not only on the pitch, but what we're doing in the community off the pitch. And I'd thank all of you for the faith that you had in moving forward with Major League Soccer. I'd acknowledge two people who aren't here today who had a big role in Timbers coming here, both then-mayor Sam Adams and Commissioner Randy Leonard. And I'd even more so honor and acknowledge the various city, Portland city staff members who we're dealing with on a day-in-and-day-out basis, whether we're doing Fields For All, whether we're working in the community, whether we're managing Providence Park. It's been a beautiful partnership. It's been a terrific partnership and a mutually beneficial partnership between the Timbers and the city of Portland. And I guess I just would thank you all for having us here again, and thank Portland for having the faith and, you know, the terrific partnership that we have.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike, our coach? Coach Caleb? Coach Porter?
When Merritt sold me on the idea of leaving the comfort of college and coming here to lead the Portland Timbers, to move my family, my three kids, here, one of the things that really excited me and inspired me was to come here and do something that's never been done, and to bring home to the fans in this community the second major trophy. And that was a big reason that I joined, a big reason that I jumped off the cliff and left, like I said, the comfort of where I was at, even a 10-year contract. And I think, and I think when you look at the ripple effect of what's happened now that we have won a trophy in this community, in the region, and in the state, that makes it even more meaningful and rewarding that I did make that decision. I'm proud to live in this community, proud to lead this club, and hopefully, we can continue to use this vehicle of professional sports to continue to ignite the community, ignite the region, ignite the state. So, I thank you. I'm humbled and honored to sit here, and, you know, I appreciate everyone for embracing me and my family in this community.
Thank you, Coach. Mike?
And nothing to add, but we wanted to share with you limited-edition championship scarves to add to your already robust collection.
Do you have a robust collection?
These are hard to get.
Thank you.
And trust Charlie will get his.
Yeah, he'll get his.
He's at a White House ceremony honoring the Timbers.
Thank you. Well, with that, I will read the proclamation, and then we can...
We'll take some council, we'll take the proclamation, council comments, then we'll ask you gentlemen if we can take a picture with you.
Yeah, and as Commissioner Fish noted, Mayor Hills is at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, D.C. Whereas, on March 11, 2009, Portland City Council voted to accept the resolution to declare city support to Peregrine LLC's bid to bring a Major League Soccer franchise to the city of Portland. And whereas, on April 14, 2011, the Portland Timbers played their first home match in front of a sold-out crowd and defeated the Chicago Fire 4-2. And whereas, in its first five seasons, the Portland Timbers franchise has sold out every single home game and cultivated the greatest fan base in sports. And whereas, on October 29, 2016, the Portland Timbers defeated Sporting Kansas City at Providence Park in an 11-round shootout that is regarded as the most epic MLS game ever played. And whereas, after defeating Cascadia rivals Vancouver Whitecaps and the FC Dallas in rounds two and three of the playoffs, the Timbers advanced to the MLS Cup final. And whereas, on December 6, 2015, in Columbus, Ohio, the Portland Timbers became Major League Soccer champions by defeating the Columbus Crew 2-1. And whereas, Portland City Council is grateful of the partnership between the city of Portland and the Timbers, and thankful to owner Merritt Paulson for his commitment to Portland and codifying our moniker as Soccer City USA. Now, therefore, I, Charlie Hills, Mayor of the city of Portland, Oregon, the city of roses, do hereby proclaim January 20, 2016, to be Major League Champion, I'm sorry, Major League Soccer Champion Portland Timbers Soccer City USA Day in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this day.
Let's suspend the rules. Thank you, Dan. We're going to invite each of my colleagues to say something, and then we'll take a picture. Commissioner Novick?
I noticed that our budget director is here in full Timbers regalia, so I thoroughly expect that he'll slip into the budget this year, something that allocating millions of dollars simply to celebrating the Timbers.
We're okay with that.
It is wonderful to be once again at Championship City. Thank you. I have to tell you, every once in a while, I pick up USA Today, which I think is one of the most underrated papers in America, and I happened to pick it up about a year and a half ago. There was a huge article in the sports section about the Timbers and their army, the greatest sports fans in America. And it was really cool to see that we're recognized throughout the nation for having a great team and a great fan base. Thank you so much for making Portland proud.
Commissioner Fritz?
Well, thank you for the joy, for all of, everything that you do for our city. It was a great season. Sports are things that unite, it's a system that unites us. It's everybody pulling for the people on the field and the coaches, and you get to yell a lot, too, which I really appreciate. And it helps when you yell, right? It's really, it's a joy. So, thank you so much. My sons, Luke and Maxwell, were in Columbus, Ohio for the final game. They had such a good time. I was watching at home. We only got allocated two tickets, so I nobly let my two sons go because you can't pick between two sons, you know, it just doesn't, wouldn't work very well. You know, I think we have the best fans in the world, not just in the United States. I grew up watching football in England and went to games in Europe and such. And the supporters here are very different from the supporters, even the rabid supporters of some of the big-name clubs, because they do a lot of good for the community. I don't know of anything like Operation Pitch Invasion. The Timbers Army and the Rose City Riverators, they're a part of this community, you're a part of this community. Their players are upstanding people who, young people and people my age and older can look up to. I do need to mention that Mike Golub told me that we're the second city after D.C. United to have both the men's and the women's championship trophies, and I'm really proud of the Riverators, of the Thorns for having done that. And I particularly want to thank Merritt Paulson for his acknowledgement of Manashim with her family tragedy that's recently happened, that, again, we come around our players because we feel like they're our players, they're our community. Thanks for getting her traded back from that whole thing a few years ago. It was just awful. Congratulations on the draft. It looks like we're going to have a better, even better year next year for both the men and the women's teams. That's fantastic. And again, thank you to the supporters who came today. I can't think of another vote where I have been more glad that I was overruled. So, thank you very much. Aye. I mean, we're not voting, but...
I had a few remarks, and now that I'm the president, no one can rule me out of order. I'm going to extend them. No, just kidding. First to my friend Merritt Paulson. Dan said something interesting earlier. He said that we cemented a partnership in 2009, but it turns out we had a little disagreement in the family in 2009 about that partnership. And we didn't clear up that disagreement until 2010. And we came instead of a two-stadium proposal, we came with a one-stadium proposal with a different financing scheme that had broad support. And I was proud to support the 2010 stadium deal. It was a different deal than 2009. It was still the partnership, but I think in retrospect, it proved to be the better deal. And historians will debate that. Second, I want to acknowledge, Merritt, that you've brought three dividends to this community through your ownership. You brought a women's team, a women's soccer team, which, as you know, in my family, it's a close call between whether we prefer to go to a women's game or a men's game. We're just honored to have both, both teams in our community. Second, you brought the first All-Star game to Portland in a major sport, and it was a heck of a game. I think we beat Bayern Munich, if I'm not mistaken. And number three, you brought a championship, the second or third major championship, depending on whether you include the women's championship. That's a hell of a record. Now, your dad saved the economy, so you still have a little work to do in terms of getting that moniker, but congratulations to you. To Caleb Porter, I congratulate you for your perseverance. When you guys weren't winning as much, you got a sense of the fickleness in the media particularly, and people were questioning whether you were the right fit. But you kept at it, and at some point, the team turned a corner, and we could all sense it. It was a team of destiny, and it wasn't going to be defeated, and it happened just at the right time. So, congratulations for instilling that spirit in your teammates, that they would persevere against all odds and believe. And if we want to consider what it's like to have a world-class coach in our backyard, I saw a newspaper story the other day about this big catch the University of Portland got. UCLA's associate head coach is taking over their program, and they ask him why. He said, "Well, Soccer City USA, the Timbers, the Clive Charles, and by the way, Caleb Porter," who he called his mentor." So, if you want to ask why it's important to have a coach of your caliber in our backyard, we're getting a world-class coach to coach at the UP because he considers you a mentor. And maybe what he didn't say is he wants your job. I don't know if that's going on, but I just...
He's not getting it.
And then to Mike Golub. Merritt, I think one of the best hires you ever made was bringing Mike in. What people don't know about Mike Golub is he's been successful in lots of other sports. He's kind of slumming in soccer, but he's been successful in hockey and in other professional sports. But he's been a pleasure to work with, and we actually have more interface with him than with you because he's the guy on the ground, kind of lobbying and pushing and visiting with us and cajoling and admonishing. And he also wears this other hat, which he's an arts champion. So, thank you for sharing him in that regard, but Mike's a gem to work with, and we're just, we're so grateful. And I just want to close by saying that I was in London recently with my family, and the purpose of the trip was to see a soccer game there. My son wanted to see an EPL game. And we were at a Starbucks at a big tourist location, and in walks a family all decked out in Timbers gear. And I turned to my wife and said, "My God, it's a global phenomenon. Look at this, wherever we go." So, we couldn't resist. We went up to them and said, "A Timbers, I mean, just can we ask, what's with all the Timber stuff?" He said, "Oh, we work for the Timbers." It was a guy in your organization. But he was wearing head-to-toe Timbers, so he was showing off the home team to great style. So, congratulations. And Dan, thank you very much for bringing this recognition board.
How about a picture?
Thanks again, Dan. And we should give a shout-out to Brendan Finn, the second-biggest soccer fan in this building, next to Martha Pellegrino. I had to put that in there. Carla, let's go back to our regular agenda, and I think we were at item number 67.
Authorize a contract with the lowest-responsive bidder for construction of the Tabor Sewer Rehabilitation Project Phase One, number E10712, for $6 million.
Is Scott coming? Okay. Colleagues, this project is part of an ongoing, large-scale sewer repair program. The city has about 2,500 miles of sewer pipes, and more than a third of them are over 80 years old. The Tabor Sewer Project will replace or repair more than 17,000 feet of pipe, which are in very poor condition. And today, Scott Gibson is here to walk us through the ass. Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Fish, city commissioners. My name is Scott Gibson. For the record, I work for Bureau of National Services, and with me today is Susan Horton, who's our project manager for the Tabor Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and she'll walk us through a brief presentation, and we can answer any questions. Susan?
Good morning. My name's Susan Horton. I'm a senior engineering associate. Scott's my manager. As mentioned, we are here today asking for authorization to approve an ordinance to advertise a $6 million Tabor Sewer Rehabilitation Project contract. This project is part of BES's Phase Two Large-Scale Sewer Rehabilitation Program, which is approved in our current capital improvement budget. This project was managed and designed in-house by our in-house engineering staff. This map shows the project location. I-84 is to the north, Stark Street to the south, and the work occurs between 44th and 66th avenues. As the map indicates, the bold lines are where the actual work will take place. The intent of this project is to replace or rehabilitate highly deteriorated pipe. By doing so, we will protect public health, property, and the environment. We will increase the sewer system capacity and reliability, and reduce the risk of sewer leases to homes, businesses, and streets. As noted here, over 17,000 feet of new pipe will be constructed, ranging in size from 6-inch to 30-inch in diameter. BES's public involvement staff have done extensive outreach to communicate general information to almost 7,000 property and property owners. In order to minimize impact to neighborhoods and businesses, BES staff met with Providence Hospital personnel, Northwest Natural Representatives, Water Bureau employees to coordinate proposed construction work. Portland Public Schools provided us a map that shows locations where their big bus stops are located, and also major travel paths used by students. Triment has provided maps of their major bus routes, and new private development locations have been identified. Their right-of-way improvements are incorporated into the project design. Two locations will require night work due to the high traffic volumes. One, Gleason and approximately 57th, and then the other on Burnside, just east of 47th. Our public involvement staff did additional outreach to approximately 300 properties and property owners to inform them of the anticipated night work and give them a chance to respond, which there was no responses generated. So, this is the fourth and final pilot project using the new vitrified clay pipe. Two projects are currently in construction, and reporting that we're receiving a good-quality product at the work site. The insulation rate is slower than with PVC pipe, as would be anticipated because of the weight difference, but the local pipe installers are doing a good job. We anticipate the production rate to increase after the learning curve has been achieved, and also when some better soil conditions for trench work are encountered. And then based on the previous clay pipe bids we received, the cost for the 12-inch pipe, our most common pipe size, is trending towards a single-digit premium. So, here is our budget schedule. We have a high-level confidence. We'd like to advertise this month, and then construction to begin in July.
Thank you very much. We'll turn to council questions. I'll just comment that Scott asked me, as we were preparing for this, whether to include that slide with the clay pipes. And I urged him to do so. You may recall, about a year ago, we told you that we were kind of going back to the future and using clay pipes, and it, a little counterintuitive, but Scott explained the costs and environmental benefits of clay costs and environmental benefits of, of clay pipes, so we, we included it in the slide.
Thank you.
Okay. Carla, have we got anyone who signed up?
I do not have a sign-up sheet for this item.
Seeing no one, this matter proceeds to a second reading. Thank you both very much. Carla, would you please read item number 68?
Authorize a contract with the lowest responsive bidder for construction of the Bybee-Glenwood Culvert Replacement Project, Number E10480, for $2,228,000.
Colleagues, this ordinance would authorize a contract for a project to replace two more culverts at Crystal Springs Creek, one at southeast Bybee Boulevard, and one at southeast Glenwood Street near southeast 23rd Avenue. Environmental Services has worked with a multitude of community partners...
...the right-of-way improvements that are associated with this work. Thank you. This project has been a great collaboration between Bureau of Transportation and Bureau of Environmental Services. Normally, when we're building bridges, we're connecting people. This time, we're connecting fish, so it was nice for us to think outside the box. But at the same time, we needed to make sure, while we were replacing the culverts, that people could still get to their business and school and recreation activities. So we're actually dividing the construction into two halves, building half the road during the time, so that both bikes, pedestrians, and cars can still pass through the site at all times while we're constructing the culvert, which did marginally increase the cost, but the benefit substantially outweighed that cost based on serving the community. But when we're finished, we will have complete infrastructure for bike, pedestrians, and vehicles through the site, as well as complete infrastructure for fish to get to their nesting place.
Thanks, David. So through the design process, we settled on a 14-foot diameter box culvert that would replace the 248-inch culverts. There were a bunch of design considerations, which led us to the box, but we can answer questions on those if you have any. David's already talked to about the need to upgrade 23rd Avenue, and as well as Southwest Bybee for pedestrian bicycle improvements in order to stage the work properly. We're providing street trees and reconstructing the intersections, or the signals at the intersections. So moving forward, we're going to advertise in early 2016. I'm estimating the second week in February. Our level of confidence is high. We'll come back with the, Christine will come back with the purchasing needs report on the results of that procurement, and we intend to start construction in May of 2016, construct through this summer, and wrap up in November. We do have a very tight in-stream work window, which we're complying with, and it's difficult, and we're going to stage the work to get it all done within the weeks that are safe for fish. And that's it. Any questions?
Very nice, colleagues.
A, a box culvert? Can you explain? I thought the culverts we used now don't have a, like, a bottom, like, they're three-sided.
Yeah, so...
Like, natural soil on the bottom.
So we had some considerations, which led us away from a three-sided box with a foundation that spans the creek, soft soils, groundwater, and the presence of an existing brick sewer, large-diameter brick sewer that we didn't want to load. So what we settled with was what we call a box culvert, because it's a complete box along the bottom as well, and what we do is we backfill that with native stream materials so that, for, as far as the fish are concerned, it's a native bottom, but structurally, it functions different. David, did I...
That's exactly right. We had super soft soil at this location, which really surprised us all. I think the geotechnical engineer compared it to toothpaste, which may have been an exaggeration, but it would have made any other foundation type very costly. So the simplest way is just to make a concrete box, a rigid box. And then, as Scott says, even the fish will be fooled, because we'll be backfilling that box with native soil, with boulders and cobbles, so that nobody would actually know, except the designers, that it was actually a closed box.
You're suggesting the fish will be fooled because they are a low, low-IQ species?
No, because we did such a great job masquerading the engineering.
All right, okay, thank you. Nice answer.
And I just want to ask Caitlin, so what does it mean that these are the last two restricted-flow culverts? What does that mean for, for the fish?
It means that when they turn from the Willamette into Johnson Creek, they have absolutely no barriers now to get to Reed College or up to the headwaters of Crystal Springs Lake. So it is a completely open 2.7-mile cold-water stream in the urban core, which is really unique in this country.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Colleagues, just two comments, then we'll see if anyone wants to testify. This Crystal Springs Restoration Project, which at one time or another has involved Parks Bureau, BES, transportation, Army Corps of Engineers, the Surrounding Neighborhood Association, a, a, a cast of thousands, and we stopped at Crystal Springs, and Mike Howe asked Caitlin to do the presentation, and she kind of told the history of why and what, and, and the benefits, and just did a wonderful job representing her bureau and the city. So congratulations for your work. Carla, anyone sign up to testify?
I did not have a sign-up sheet for this item.
Anyone want to testify? If not, this proceeds to a second reading. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. It's a wonderful project and a great example of cross-bureau collaboration.
Okay, Carla, with three matters left, we'll do the two Portland Fire and Rescue first. If you'll please read item number 69.
Authorize intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for a community healthcare assessment team pilot to connect high-frequency callers to the right care.
Commissioner Dan Saltzman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to return this item to my office.
Without objection. Carla, would you please read item number 70?
I was going to say how wonderful it was. I hope it comes back soon.
Yeah, we're hoping it comes back too.
Those comments are out of order. Would you please read item number 70?
Accept and appropriate a grant in the amount of $48,672 from Oregon State Fire Marshal for flammable liquids bulk storage specialty training for Station 24 personnel, and authorize an intergovernmental agreement.
Commissioner Dan Saltzman.
Turn it over to Portland Fire and Rescue to explain this.
For the record, my name is Sean Kirstensen. I represent Portland Fire and Rescue. This is a, like, like was stated, this is a grant through OSF, Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office, the HMEP program, for the amount of $48,672 to send 13 members of our Marines/Foam Station Team to foam training for bulk flammable liquid storage in Texas. And any other questions you may have?
How will the members then disseminate this information to people who might need to know it in the public?
For the public? Well, for these members, there is, we, well, there's several different ways, through training, and then also through our Public Information Office, to disseminate the, the information. This is more training for our firefighters to better handle large storage facilities for flammable liquids. That information would be disseminated through our Information Office.
But I'm wondering what we do to educate property owners who may not be storing their flammable liquids properly? I mean, presumably, this is so that you learn how to, to take care of any problems with that?
Yes. Well, this, this training is for, it would, let me back up a second. This training would be for extinguishing large flammable liquid fires. So as far as proper storage, that would be more related to our Fire Marshal's Office through our Hazardous Materials Inspector.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Carla, anyone sign up to testify?
I did not have a sign-up sheet for this one.
This is an emergency item. Would you please call the roll?
Fritz.
Aye.
Saltzman?
Thank you for the presentation. Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye. Matter passes. Thank you. We have one remaining item this morning. Carla, would you please read item number 71?
Vacate Northeast Sandy Boulevard bound by northeast, northeast Coach Street, east Burnside Street, northeast 12th Avenue, and northeast 14th Avenue, subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Commissioner Steve Novick.
Colleagues, we have Lance Lindahl here to explain this item, and I believe Lance has already, has also brought along an amendment to Item B, Subsection 1.
That's correct, Commissioner Novick. Thank you. Hello, my name's Lance Lindahl, Portland Bureau of Transportation, Right-of-Way Acquisition. Before I today is a request to vacate Northeast Sandy Boulevard between northeast 12th and northeast 14th avenues. This portion of Sandy was closed to, excuse me, to through traffic in 2010 upon construction of the East Burnside-Coach Couplet Project. Vehicles traveling west on Sandy now use East Burnside and northeast Coach Street to access the central city and the Burnside Bridge. The vacation was petitioned by Weston Investment Company LLC. They are the owners of Block 267, located between 12th and 13th Streets. They also own the triangular portion on the north side of Northeast Sandy between northeast 13th and 14th. John F. Potts owns the southern portion of Block 276 as currently home to Northwest Fitness. Mr. Potts is in support of the vacation as proposed, and is working with the petitioner on future development plans for this area. And in regards to the amendment, it was discovered very recently that the three utility poles that are mentioned, that currently serve the streetlight service in the area, only two of those poles were recently transferred to the city. The third pole is still owned by PGE. So language has been changed in paragraph B1 on page 2 to remove the pole that's still owned by PGE, and it will be allowed to remain on-site, and will be covered by an easement by other language in the ordinance.
Mr. Novick, would you like to move that amendment?
I move the amendment.
Or a second?
Second.
Would you please call the roll?
Fritz.
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye. Amendment passes. Thank you. Is that the end of your presentation?
That's the end of mine. I believe there were a couple people that were signed up to, to talk about it, though.
I have a question. On the Exhibit C, it looks like there's trucks and a car that are currently using the right-of-way. Why is it being, what would, so it looks like it's currently serving a transportation purpose, and so I'm confused as to why we're being asked to vacate it.
It's only being used for parking currently, and the access to that parking is a little unclear. Right now, people are trespassing across Mr. Weston's property to access that area and park in it, but an important part of the vacation was to retain Northeast 13th Avenue for stormwater and bike and pedestrian connections.
So those trucks and such are, the businesses will still be able to, will be, they'll then use it for their own private parking purposes?
That's right. In the interim, nothing is going to change, other than it becomes private property that can be managed by the abutting property owners.
And are all the abutting property owners in favor of the street vacation?
That is my understanding. Potts and Weston are the fee owners to the various parcels that will receive land back. And then there is one tenant on the north side, an automotive business.
What about the fitness business that has had a lot of changes around it over the course of time? Do they support it?
They do, and they're working hand-in-hand with Mr. Weston on future plans for this area.
Very glad to hear that. Thank you.
My recollection is, when you say Mr. Weston, you talk about Joe Weston, and it's because he owns the Portland Bottling Plant, that, the land with the Portland Bottling Plant. Is that correct?
That's correct, and the Bottling Plant site actually includes several other parcels that are currently used for parking and rented out for other commercial purposes.
Other questions, Carla? Do we have other invited testimony?
Yes.
Is it people who signed up, or, or Steve, part of the formal presentation?
We mustn't forget.
Carla, who? Has anyone signed up?
I've got three people signed up.
All right, let's go to the sign-up list first.
Well, first of all, I'd like to introduce Larry Porter, who's here on behalf of Weston Investment LLC.
Why don't you come forward, sir? You've heard the presentation. Is there anything you would like to, anything you disagree with?
Just a few comments, by me.
Please.
So commissioners, my name is Larry Porter, Porter Company, and I represent Weston Investments, and I do have one thing to say, and that is, we're really glad to be here. Mr. Weston started dialogue with the city about eight years ago on how to vacate those two sections of Sandy Boulevard and get them to be part of the adjoining abutting properties. Since then, the dialogue's continued, and about 18 months ago, I submitted an application to the city for a street vacation, and after lots of approvals and lots of consents, we are finally here today to ask your consent on the petition application. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I just want to thank staff for their proficiency and professionalism in, in processing this application, and if you have questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
I want to just note for the record that Mr. Weston is, is, is someone who is often very transparent about whatever feelings and frustrations he has with local government. So it's nice on an occasion like this to be able to move something that he supports.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't, I think we're fine. I think we may ask you back if something comes up, but Carla, let's go to the, let's go to the folks who signed up.
The other two are Charles, Charlie Johnson and Terry Parker.
Let's mix it up this time. Mr. Parker, let's let you go first.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Terry Parker. I live in northeast Portland. Vacating Sandy Boulevard between 12th and 14th Avenue and giving up the right-of-way is an unwise move. It places developer profits ahead of common sense and the good of the community. When the East Burnside-Coach Couplet was proposed a few years back, it was promoted as a safety measure to fix the problems associated with the complicated 12th and Burnside intersection, and to help relieve congestion. Coupled with supersized bicycle modifications made to 12th Avenue between Sandy and the Lloyd District, the outcome of the Couplet Project is that congestion has worsened to the point that many east-side businesses want to move out of the area. Safety has also been compromised, especially where the eastbound traffic reenters Sandy Boulevard from 14th. The curvature of the intersection is such that large trucks and buses need to use both lanes to make the turn. Triment no longer uses this route, now traveling further east on Burnside before connecting with Sandy. The original underlying purpose of the project was rarely brought up in the rigged and broken public participation process. If the right probing questions were asked to the right people in the know, the answer went something like this: "The reasoning for the project is only about 20% transportation-related, and the other 80% is to make more land available for development." Coming from an administration with a car heater mindset, the project also had the distinct appearance to be more of a roadblock than to make traffic flow better. Vacating this portion of Sandy would eliminate the option of correcting the least, at least a portion of the bungled-up mess from the past by reintroducing eastbound traffic back to this portion of the Boulevard. This fix wouldn't put right the capacity and congestion problems associated with Coach Street or on 12th Avenue, but it would eliminate for the eastbound Sandy traffic to navigate the unsafe and hazardous curves at 14th, and likely reduce some congestion in the eastbound direction for both on Sandy and Burnside. It would also eliminate the need for Triment buses to use a roundabout route to go east on Sandy. Common sense, traffic safety, and reducing congestion, and therefore emissions, the good of the community should outweigh developer profits. Vacating this portion of Sandy needs to be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning. Commissioners, it was insightful to get that testimony. I'm also very familiar with this intersection. I can't remember the exact, if any, relationship between Mr. Weston and American Property Management, but this, near this property was in the news a while back, a couple years ago, when Occupy Portland was still using office space and was looking at being on that intersection. The idea that we've created a situation where there's more traffic congestion and more emissions is something that I hope that Commissioner Novick and the Transportation Bureau can look into. And the other important issue that was raised in public testimony here is that this definitely, whether it was intentional or not, has the effect of creating prime development real estate. And although eventually, apparently without the involvement of the PDC, some shenanigans will happen to get some higher property tax value from this place, it would actually be appropriate for you to get financial consideration or other compromises from these property owners. I don't know that restoring Sandy Boulevard, it is a bit of a mess when you come up Sandy and go by these new apartments. It's an interesting crosswalk to go through. But the earlier testimony is essentially correct. What this is really about is preparing land for high-income development. We've lost the little restaurant that was there. It's replaced by a huge condo apartment complex. So don't just rely on future increased property tax revenue someday from this facility. Weston wants this. In America, especially when rich people want something, we make them pay. Not outlandish, not super extortion, but it would be appropriate for the city to negotiate for, if it's legal under state and other laws, it would be appropriate for the city to get financial remuneration for turning this into an investment-for-profit investment property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance in a hearing, so Commissioner Novick goes to a second reading?
Yes.
All right. This will go to a second reading. We are now concluded for the morning business. We'll reconvene at 2 o'clock for a 2 o'clock time...
will happen to get some higher property tax value from this place, it would actually be appropriate for you to get financial consideration or other compromises from these property owners. I don't know that restoring Sandy Boulevard, it is a bit of a mess when you come up Sandy and go by these new apartments. It's an interesting crosswalk to go through. But the earlier testimony is essentially correct. What this is really about is preparing land for high-income development. We've lost the little restaurant that was there. It's replaced by a huge condo apartment complex. So don't just rely on future increased property tax revenue someday from this facility. Weston wants this. In America, especially when rich people want something, we make them pay. Not outlandish, not super extortion, but it would be appropriate for the city to negotiate for, if it's legal under state and other laws, it would be appropriate for the city to get financial remuneration for turning this into an investment-for-profit investment property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance in a hearing, so Commissioner Novick goes to a second reading?
Yes.
All right. This goes to a second reading. We are now concluded for the morning business. We'll reconvene at 2 o'clock for a 2:00 time-certain. Council's adjourned.